On the agenda, which is 691, declarations of any disclosing or pecuniary interests. Are there any please? Yep, okay, 692, apologies for absence. Are there any please?
Just on councillor McDonald.
Right, thank you. 693, the minutes, we're asked to confirm the minutes of the 20th of December. I'll just check the pages for you. Any changes, comments about page one, page two, page three, and hopefully not page four. Okay, can I sign this, colleagues, as being a true record?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt, for replying. And for those who did so, so gently at here. 694, I did say to our guest this evening that I'd push in item 700 a bit early. So if all of you will forgive me, can we go on to item 700 next? And then we'll come back, obviously. So this is the Honoured Citizens Award. It's really a report on what happened this time. And if anyone wants to take it a bit further, you're welcome to do so. And I think I'll invite, I think I'll invite you to say something first, and then Mark Robinson might like to comment as well. But we do have a lot of bits of paper today, so.
Okay. Okay, so we have struggled over recent months to try and firstly get nominations for our Honoured Citizens Award for 2023, and also find a suitable event venue to award it. And what we decided at the last committee is firstly, we did have some nominations. The committee nominated a group of three councillors, which was councillor Terry, councillor McDonald and councillor Barretto, to view and assess those nominations and come up with a recipient. And they made the decision to award it to Karen Connor. As a committee and council, we approached Mark, it was the organizer of the TARA's, to say that could we, as we support the TARA's and have done since its inception, use the TARA's event to present that award? We did tweak, and actually the committee did say that they weren't very keen on the Honoured Citizens Award. It seemed to be an outdated terminology. So we actually used Service in the Community Award at the TARA's on the 3rd of February this year, and that award was presented. So as far as I'm concerned, we've achieved and successfully delivered what we said as a committee. And I know some of you were there. I don't know whether you have any thoughts on that, or if I might mark to.
Mark, would you like to say anything at this stage?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate the collaboration, not just the award itself, but the actual event itself, particularly with the Beanie's and Events team. Firstly, I had done, actually, as well away, I started working on the next event, next morning. And it's only fair to admit, you know, that I've revamped the format completely in a way to achieve, to enable the people to support the event, the events team, and the caterers to deliver a smoother event. So that is changing. But the reason, fortunately, I bumped into the chairman today, we had a coffee, is how we move forward. I think I probably, on average, 150 class nominations each time we run the event. And I think for me, you know, the next event's going to be in 2025. If you're willing to continue collaboration, now we formalize a process to deliver your award within the evening itself. So there's a structure, because it was all a bit last minute, 11th hour. And so for me, going forward, is the event order lines at some point over the course of the next year. Because I'll be working on next year's event this year. It's how we get a process going forward to enable you, for instance, I'd be quite ready to access those nominations, which we should give you a broader range of our community, which selects your, I'm referring to use the old phrase, the honour of the citizen. That's about it for me, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. I welcome comments in a moment, just to remind you of the obvious, that we are simply receiving the report this evening. We're not making decisions about what might happen in the future. So with that in mind, are there any colleagues who'd like to add anything in, please? Right, well, thank you very much indeed, and thanks, Mark, for coming. You are, as we always do, welcome to stay if you'd like to. Still feel obliged.
No, just thank you for your time. And again, thank you to the events team.
Thank you. So colleagues, on to 694, review civic policy. And you will have received, you may have got, or you may have seen, a copy of the civic policy in which there are a number of fairly obvious changes, like recording the fact we've got more councillors and like what it says there. But I think there are, there is one very significant change to be proposed. And I think possibly what I suggest is that, shall we start with you, David, and then I know Vic and others want to add something in.
Okay, so firstly, just to reiterate what Mike has said in terms of cleaning up the policy with the obvious. I mean, the policy states that there's 16 councillors representing six wards. That's clearly not accurate. There's 18 councillors representing seven wards now. So there's the obvious things like that that needs to be cleaned up. There are numerous titles in various different guises, mayor's secretary, mayor's officer, civic secretary, civic officer. There is just the one officer position, and that's civic officer. So again, we need to go through that and change that. It also refers, as councillor Harvey reminded me today, that there's the toast to the queen, as it says at the moment. It's the toast to the king now. So as long as the committee allows all of those obvious changes to be made, we really are here just to deliberate the one that's highlighted in the committee officers' report, which was the reason this has been put on to the agenda. And that is the area which selects the deputy mayor, the mayor-elect in May. Currently, it states that you have to serve for three consecutive years. If that is the case, there's going to be a very fine group of councillors that can be nominated. All are one, actually, have served as mayor, which is not an issue. You know, mayors have served two terms in the past. Maybe not consecutively until the old days, I think. But so the view is, this was asked to go on here to see whether the committee wants to review and revise that criteria. Can I just say, if you downgrade it to two years, it means that one other councillor would be added to that number, and that's councillor Matt McDonald. If you then went for a year's service, it opens it up to the wider council representation. We've never been in this situation before, and when this was proposed and changed, I think, back in 2015, I think. The reason we did that is because we didn't usually have such an overturn of councillors. And it quite, you know, it sort of bobbled along quite nicely, that people served their time, and it was all about the experience. Previous mayors in the past have stated that they, and I spoke to Terry before, even Terry, and Mike, as a long-serving councillor, when you get to the position of mayor, even though you've served as a councillor for a long period of time, it doesn't mean to say that you can naturally fit and understand the protocols of the mayors. So we changed also to have the deputy mayor lead into the mayor, which again uses that deputy mayor, mayoral position as an apprenticeship, if you like. So I think if we did revert it back down to a year, you've also got to remember that you will serve a year as deputy mayor. One of the things that we should do as a councillor, if you beg me to give my opinion, is we need to look at the position of deputy mayor a lot more understandingly, because, I mean, Chris has thankfully represented the council on a couple of occasions recently as deputy mayor, but we don't use the deputy mayor enough. And I think, you know, that needs to be reviewed in the past. But that's something outside the policy, maybe. It's just induction and protocol.
So. Okay. Thank you very much. I think there may be some other comments on that particular proposal. It seems to me personally, a difficult proposal to accept. I don't personally like it very much. But equally, I don't see any real alternative. So obviously, if you want to say, ooh, don't like that, and could come up an alternative that solves the problem, that would be great. And I'll just suggest that we stick on this specific issue at the moment. If you wish to introduce other proposals for changes in civic policy, but not to do with the timing of the first election of someone to be a mayor, then please leave that till later. We'll come back to it. So any comments, please, on what you've heard so far? I think, Vic, you're definitely the first.
First and foremost, this 36-page document that we got on Monday, and we're meant to read it, evaluate it, and to be honest, I've never seen the civic policy before, so I don't know where the differences are. I don't know where the changes are, and I think it's a little unfair for us to be given a document two days before a meeting that we have to adopt, when, once again, we've got no information about.
Okay, so.
I'd like to know what changes are made.
Okay.
And if, when the document, I understand the rush now, because we've basically got very limited choice, where so many of us are new, that don't make common sense. But it'd be nice to have cited this a bit earlier and more practical, where the changes are.
Okay, so the changes literally for this committee to hone in on are to do with the selection of deputy mayor. That's the one thing that you need to focus on.
The obvious change.
Well, the only other things that will change is just the obvious ones, which you can't continue with a policy. You can't change this policy after tonight for another six months. So you don't want a policy that has inaccuracies, where people can say, actually, why are you toasting the queen and not the king? So the obvious ones, I think, you can, you know, we can do those over the, so there's nothing that really needs to be thought through apart from this. This is the major change. The rest of them are cosmetic. We, to be honest, apart from 18 councillors representing seven wards and toasting the king rather than the queen, we could leave all those other titles. It's just whilst we're changing those, Vic, we might as well just be a little bit more uniform in terms of identifying the officer who does most of the work in the civic area as the civic officer, rather than two or three different changes. The only one we're really looking at tonight, and it's an important one to make a decision on, simply because you have to nominate who's going to be deputy mayor at next week's full council. It states in the policy, it's done in the February full council.
I understand that.
Now, we can still run with three years, but you will be limited to those councillors.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. And on reading the actual document, it looks sensible, but I don't know what's been changed in it. And if we get documents like this again, ideally, can we see what changes are made to the documents?
Yeah.
No way of knowing what documents exist, what they say, what they do, because I've only been on the council 10 months.
Can I say a couple of things, Vic? Firstly, I apologize. I agree it would be very desirable that we have papers much further in advance. And it may be that when we're looking at a review of staffing, perhaps in the near future, we would be looking at the way in which we produce papers. If that means there's a stress on certain member staff, we have to bear that in mind. I think, however, it's fair to say that what's been said by David about the the other proposed changes are, they are, I promise you, totally to do with terminology and making sense. I also point out to colleagues who are concerned about the lack of information in advance that we are not actually making a decision ourselves. We're recommending to full council. So you have an opportunity, Vic, to vote at the full council meeting, if you're able to come to it next week.
I understand that, and I appreciate your answer, but all I'm saying is, how can I recommend, as a member of this committee, how can I recommend a document where I don't know what the changes are? I don't know what, we get a 36-page document presented to us on a Monday, which we read once, twice, maybe three times. I don't know what change, it might as well be in Arabic. I don't know what changes are made. And it'd be handy, if there are changes made to a document like that, that we can see what changes are made. Because that way, we can make an informed decision.
Yeah.
Vic, set the point you've made, but I don't think we can change it. All I can suggest is that this committee, if it wishes, could say, we don't want to make any changes this evening. We'll just leave it to the full council, do it from the cold. But I think the danger of that is that we will have less time for discussion, and there may be other issues that councillors want to raise about possible changes. So I would encourage you to feel that you should make this change tonight, if you wish to do so. And I fully accept the point you've made about the short notice, and it's something which has been pointed out before, and we really need to address it. And I believe there is an opportunity to address it when we look at the roles of the members of staff we currently have. So I'm in your hands, colleagues. You can say, I don't want to talk about it anymore. Or you can say, we accept a short notice. We understand what you're proposing and why. That is, that the qualification for mayor be reduced from three years to one year. And you go ahead. I'm in your hands. If you want to do either of those or something else, do so. But in the meantime, are there any more comments, please? Yes, there's one from Matt.
Just a question. I'm sorry if we have covered this already. I just want to get it sorted in my head, because of the six-month thing, I wasn't aware of, and it's kind of flagged up. Can we not make a decision now to amend the rule regarding length of service before coming mayor? And then defer everything else to a later date to give us time to address it and read in depth and so on? Because maybe other things come across we might want to change. The pressing issue is the term.
You certainly can. It's just that if, so firstly, can I also just say? The committee officers' report was sent around, albeit late on Monday, because we had to have a meeting with Terry in terms of town events. So we did delay that. It could have gone out on Friday. Was it sufficiently early enough? Maybe not. But it does clearly state in this bit that the area, because of the elections and what happened at the elections, the bit that you are looking at tonight is changing the three-year rule. It says in here two years, but you can go down to one year. That's your two options. So it does tell you what you're really looking at. The only thing for me is reading the document again, and with Chris coming back with a couple of things that he saw when he was looking through it, there's just two things. Forget the terminology of the mayor's officer or not. There's two things that we really need to change, and that is the toast to the king, not the queen, because it looks silly if we continue with a document for another six months. And also the 18 councillors representing seven wards. You can defer everything else, and I think over the next few months, really, this document is one of a number of policies that you'll be going through with a fine tooth comb. But you do need to, unless you decide to carry on with the three years, and you will still have nominations with one, two, three, four, five councillors next Tuesday. But if you want to expand that pool of councillors to nominate, then you need to make that decision at least tonight to recommend a full council on Tuesday.
Any more comments, please?
Yeah, I have one. Some time ago, we had the procedure for mayor making changed, so it counted prior time.
I don't understand what you mean.
Well, we had the example of one of our councillors had lost his seat. Came back on four years later, but then they changed the procedures.
Oh, yeah. So we changed, yeah. So we changed that policy as a result of that. And this is the policy that stands. So, and actually, at that time, you performed your duties as mayor and then became deputy mayor, so it was a bit of a silly. So we changed all of that. I think it was 2015 that we changed that.
Yeah, long as that appears.
Yeah.
Any more?
Yeah.
If it was changed, obviously if it's kept at three years, surely you'd come to a stage where we're almost in this position again.
Yes.
Surely going down to one year, you'd make a better, because then you've got 16 councillors.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, in the previous procedure, basically said that all of the new councillors, so there's several of you that are new councillors, you couldn't even think about becoming mayor in your first term. You had to be re-elected for your second term. What Chris is saying is there was a councillor that wasn't re-elected, but he was re-elected on the third term, and then he served sufficient time to be considered as mayor. So it all got a bit complicated, and they changed the process to say that, and also they changed the deputy, so basically you were nominating the deputy mayor as mayor-elect. So they changed it around. So you served as deputy mayor and then mayor, but you could do that after three years. So technically, under this process, all the new councillors would have to wait until their fourth year to be considered, but it would still be within their first term. So we've done all of that. What we're proposing tonight is whether we change the three-year to either a two-year or a one-year service.
It doesn't make any difference, really, does it, in practical terms, whether it's one or two?
It does.
We run out of people. We only have one.
It does, because two years, all you'll add to those five councillors is one more councillor, which may be fair. It's not.
It's maybe one year.
If we want to do that.
If you want to do that. This is an option.
Then you've also got a risk of, if you have the two years or the three years, and something happens to two or three councillors that have been there for two or three years, then where does that lead you? You know, hypothetically, if the longer councillors suddenly resign or they retire, then you're in that same position, aren't you?
So you are for a couple of years.
One year, one year option would be a better one, because you've still got the choice of 18 councillors, which, I know it's been unprecedented, but it's, you know, because we're going to be having this conversation next year as well.
If we do nothing, that's certainly true. We'll have the conversation again. Terry?
Yeah, I just wanted to give some historical perspective, because before 2015, when the civic policy was introduced, you could be elected in the May and become mayor straight away. There were no rules at all. So the fact that, you know, we're looking at a potential change of the rules isn't exactly going against tradition, because they've only existed for a few years. And they were written at a time when the expectation was people would be on the council for lots of years, and there wouldn't be a lot of change. So to think of it as a sort of a break with tradition, I think, is wrong. It's a relatively new thing. It worked in 2015 in those circumstances. It's not something that, you know, is particularly workable when you've got 13 new members.
I think we felt that it, the evidence is that now, sorry, Matt, I'll come back to you. The evidence is now that it does take a while to settle in as a councillor. There is actually surprising about to learn. And it's, it would be dishonest of me to say, I think after one year I knew everything. I absolutely didn't. In fact, I was probably still learning well into the second time of election, after the second election. So I would caution us wanting to leap in where we can't, where we could avoid it, but the difficulty is seeing how we need to, we do need to have a choice of some kind. I've forgotten who someone else wants to do it. Matt, you want to speak?
Yeah, I, not that I'm trying to round it up or anything. I actually don't think we have any other options, as you said. I think we need to accept the three options Dave has given us, at least on an interim basis. Because we can't keep saying queen. There are more councillors, and we're going to have this problem next year. If we dropped it to two, the problem, we're only extending it by one more year. Then after that, we're going to be narrowing down to mayors who've only just been mayor and not give anyone else the opportunity to, after we've gone through people who haven't. So I think we need to accept them, at least on an interim.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to wait till February 2026 before you get the full quota, aren't you? Yeah. Then you're then coming to the end of the term, and then you can all get voted off.
I think also, one of the things that the committee does need to consider is how we induct and utilize the deputy mayor. I know at times, you know, there's been political reasons why mayor and deputy mayor may not want to work together. But I think for the sake of representing the councillor, the council, sorry, we do need to make sure that that one year as deputy mayor is used wisely to embed them into all the protocols and things, ready for their mayorship.
I'm going to, yeah, please.
I think we should waste any more time. Something about it, being a representative and the people that voted for me, I don't think that many people would be that bothered about, you know, in terms of the people that voted for us, whether it was three or one years. I think this is just about having more choice going forward, and it's as simple as that. However, I really take on the point that you've said, not just about this document, but any document, more time to process it before end is probably available.
I'm going to suggest that the simplest way forward I can think of on the spur of the moment is that we have a vote on this specific issue. And we then have a vote on the other minor changes that have been proposed, and some of which you've heard. And I still have then to allow any councillor wishes to propose other changes that they wish to suggest. And I know for a fact that one councillor has suggested such things. So first of all, can I propose, colleagues, that you accept the change that we've been discussing at some length about the length of time a councillor has to serve before they may stand for deputy mayor and then for mayor? So those in favor of that change, please.
Do we need to say a year?
Sorry, Chair, can I ask what that change is? Is it one year or two years?
Well, we talked about one year.
Okay.
I think we should make it one year, because that solves the problem. Two years delays the issue.
Yeah.
So are there any, just check again, support for that proposal, please? I think we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Those against that proposal, please. One. Those abstaining, please. Well, on my side, and I accept that I do wear glasses, I see a vote of six to one in favor of the proposal.
Can I just say something? I'll have to reinforce your point, you know, may not predicament, because I would be item 13, next one in line, which puts me in an awkward position. That's why I've been quiet, letting the colleagues discuss it. But let me reinforce the point you made, that it does take more than a term to understand what it is to be a councillor. I'm on my second term and I'm learning every day. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think to consider myself, to put myself to the deputy, which is a partnership with mayorship, or even mayorship on my first couple of years, because I still am learning the ropes of this. I'm just saying, whoever gets voted next, it should be somebody that served at least a few years, understands the position, that's all.
I'm going to stick with, I think it gives clarity if we actually vote for or against. So I'm going to suggest that we just go on with what I proposed. The second vote would therefore be, do you want to go ahead with the other minor changes, such as correcting the dates and the names that have been mentioned by David? Those who wish to agree with that proposal, please raise one hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Thank you. Those against that proposal? One. Those abstaining? Right, thank you very much. It's carried by six to one. Now, we're still on the subject, because I must make it available to councillors to be able to suggest other changes to the civic policy, if they should wish. Is there any councillor wishes to make any other, who wish to make, ah, is there any councillor wish to make any other changes, please?
Yes, I would, I'd, David hit on a really good point of the deputy mayor. Luckily or unluckily, Stuart hasn't missed very much. So theoretically, I've had no apprenticeship. All I've done is turned up with a car driven at the shop, which is great. I thoroughly enjoyed it and been to two things. I've really not been involved in any of the procedural stuff at all. Okay, so I would hope that moving forward, that I would be running mayor, right, and that I would like, when I go on my summer things, to take the deputy mayor with me. So we can go through and learn together and support. I'm not the best speaker, so to have two of us that support would be really good. And then, like, we'd learn and be on a shoe-hold, straight into the role the next year, as opposed to being scared still of what's to happen.
I would suggest that doesn't need any agreement from us. That's the role of, the mayor can do that. I think, as I say, an excellent suggestion. We have had mayors who've missed quite a lot of meetings or We have had mayors who've missed quite a lot of meetings or have not always been able to chair the meeting. I don't, I forget, have you done that? Have you chaired?
No, no.
So really, getting at least a taste of one, one, the minimum of chairing one meeting, and I would suggest three or four or five visits, away visits, would be very desirable. So I think your suggestion personally is excellent and we look forward to you carrying it out.
I'd just say something. In terms of policies, I know the acting town clerk is, is very keen to look at all the policies because, I take your point, Vic. I mean, we need to, we need to understand the policies ourselves in a lot more detail as a staff. You know, we should be living by these, but sometimes, you know, policies get buried away and we don't look at them. I think from what some of the councillors have said, the cosmetic changes are fine and you've approved those. I think we need to be looking at this particular policy in a, in a lot more detail and bring it back in six months and actually look at what are the real responsibilities of a mayor? Why do we have a mayor? What should he be, he or she be doing? We just say it's an ambassadorial role. Well, that's quite a vague and wide. And also, we could incorporate that, you know, the deputy mayors should be encouraged to take on some of the, some of the activities, et cetera. And there's a proper induction, certainly in terms of the other role of the mayor, which is chairing the full council meetings. And that's a big ask for, for anyone, really. So I think we need to look at that and bring this whole civic policy back in six months. It gives us much more time to look at this in more detail. But thanks for approving the, the obvious ones and I'll get those changed.
There was a time, not so very long ago, when you became deputy mayor after your year as mayor, which always struck me as insane. And I thought it was a very good change to put it the way around so that you get the practice in. It's making sure that practice is actually available to the deputy mayor. I think Stuart, you'd like to say a word about some other proposal for?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that there's a, forgot the word for it. For flags. Sorry, I just forgot, completely forgot the word. I mean, where is a protocol? So I believe there's not a protocol on the flags that we hang outside King's House. Is there something we can put into that?
We can, but again, you've got to decide which, you know, which commemorative days, if you like, or on what occasions do we recognise raising a flag as a council? I mean, there's a plethora of things you can, you can do that. We're going to get inundated with, with.
I, I've drawn up, say, six or seven. So I've got obviously D-Day this year, National Pride Day, which is twenty-eighth of June, World Holocaust Day, twenty-seventh of January, Norfolk Day, twenty-seventh of July, which is Remembrance Day, Commonwealth Day, eleventh of March, maybe King Charles's birthday on the fourteenth of November and Portugal Day on the tenth of June. And Armed Forces Day on the twenty-ninth of June.
I sense as a, well, I won't put words in your mouth. I'm happy for you to, for you to guide me as to whether we deal with that now and say yes or no to it or whether we leave it for a wider review of the policy. Any thoughts, please? Vic?
Can I say, I, I, I agree. Flags is fairly important to a lot of people. Actually, setting the days that we do, I think we need to have a little bit more time to sort that out, but I certainly think we should have policy on flags. Me personally, I'd like to see the Fethford Town and the Norfolk flag fly every day.
So apart from national campaigns, which D-Day would be one of them, the only one that you've mentioned there that we actually, we do something physically is Commonwealth Day.
Yes, we do.
And why we would just isolate that day, I, I, I'm not aware of the reason. But I think if we're not careful, we'll just agree a list of days without any thought given to it because there could be a lot of people that would argue that there should be more or less of them.
I'm, I'm looking to see, is, is there any guidance from you colleagues? Do you want to go ahead with this now or would you rather leave it as part of a general review?
I fully agree with Stuart's point. I think the dates are reasonable. Obviously, including our, excluding any particular dates, it's up for discussion, but yeah, I think the plan to have fixed dates for the flag is a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
This calls for a working group, doesn't it?
Sorry?
This calls for a working group.
Yes. It's very grand, a working group to decide what flags you're going to play on. I, I mean, if, if we're thinking of a general review of the civic policy, can we not simply propose in the course of time that we have a specific list of flags and then, yeah, we, we can have, we can have two, couple, two or three councillors drawing up a list. Stuart would be one, presumably. He's already given us a list. Is anyone else who would like to join such a supreme decision-making body? Carla would, that's two. It's good to have an uneven number so that you cannot possibly have a tied vote. So is there a third person available, please? Yes, there is. Okay.
We've got three flag.
Vic, can I just clarify?
We've got three votes, there's three flag poles outside.
Can I just say though, as a town council, you can make a decision to fly, you know, I mean, in support of the Ukraine war, for instance, Holocaust Day, those kind of things. You don't have, what, what you're advocating here is having a formal policy which must be expanded into what does that mean in terms of an event? With the greatest respect, and the one that I've identified, which is Commonwealth Day, with the greatest respect, it's very poorly attended. And it almost is pitiful, really, that if you're going to nominate this as something that the council really puts their support behind, we have to have some kind of, well, it's not just a protocol, it's an event behind it. So you have to also think about that. Otherwise, you're going to be rolling out every other week to raise the flag for something or other. But, so I think, you know, a working group is great. You can, if there's something that's really particular to your heart, you can do this now anyway. But it's, it's what does, what does that flag protocol actually include, you know?
David, without wanting to waste a lot more time on this, can I just check something? You said about the Ukraine, that was what was in my mind as well. But is that appropriate for a council or is that version on a political statement?
Well, you've got to, that's what you've got to.
Because I don't think we can make political statements.
No, and, you know, and with respect, if you're looking at one of the other ones, that, you know, in the current climate, is, is that, but that's something you make a decision on when you, you decide.
Okay, can I suggest that that group arranged to meet? Would you convene that group as you were the one who introduced the idea? Thanks for doing so. And I wonder whether we can risk suggesting that we move on to item six nine five, which is the bottom of the first page, if you've got a page like mine, to receive an update for civic events in the current year ending toward May twenty-four. How do we go for that?
So basically, just to let you know that the mayoral and the civic season, if that's the right terminology of events, has now drawn to a close. We have delivered all of those ones that we recognise within the council. So that's mayor making, the civic reception, civic church service, Christmas carol service and the Christmas lunch for the elderly on the mayoral event side, on the civic side, Battle of Britain reception, Remembrance Sunday reception. And last year was the King's coronation, which was on the sixth of May. The only other event, and it's more personal and specific to a mayor, is the Mayor's Civic Ball, which is on the nineteenth of April, and that will definitely complete those events. Looking forward to twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we will then deliver all of those, apart from King's coronation. Never know. Never known. But we will include the D-Day eightieth anniversary. And also there's discussions that can later agenda item in this meeting, whether have a greater involvement in Remembrance Sunday in terms of organising and delivering the parade as well as the reception. And also, even though it's not technically a town event, it's more a venue event. I know Vic, you mentioned it in a previous meeting, you'll be pleased that we actually are taking on the, the responsibility of delivering a remembrance concert on Friday, the eighth of November, leading up to that. So we will be doing that this year. And that pretty much brings that on. Anybody's got any questions?
Okay. Move straight on then to six nine six, which is civic and remembrance events. There's pretty much an overlap there, but.
Well, there, there is, there, there is and there isn't. This is, this is really something that Mac took on from last meeting on the twentieth of December. We talked about our, our sort of inclination to deliver and be more involved in the remembrance parade and not just have a responsibility delivering a reception after the event. And he also wanted to, to, to set out a real protocol because some of the new councillors were saying that they, they went into that event. And it's a big event for the town. They went into that event without understanding what their role was. So I know he's only, again, just sent this around. We have time to, to take this in and digest it. And Mac will, has apologised, he can't be here tonight, but we will bring it back up in April. I know there are issues at the Royal British Legion Club and they've got a new committee, which hopefully will put them on a more sustainable footing. But I think this is a real timely thing that we should be considering because we never know by November, they might not be in a position. And with the death of John Wayne last year, who was the parade master for the Royal British Legion, they were at the eleventh hour, putting a bit of a predicament to carry out the parade process. So I think it's only right that we, together with Arie Fonington, who is one of our Freedom of the Town recipients, to take a greater role in delivering this in November of this year. So what Mac is also asking for, and I don't know whether those councillors who are looking at some of the civic policy again, want to put themselves forward, but one of the things that Mac wants to do, because he knows there's a lot more work to be done on this, is he wants to set up a working group if, if the committee are in agreement. And he's asking for three councillors, actually does identify you, Vic, as possibly one of those three. To put a bit of pressure on you, to be part of that, to actually flesh this out, to be represented in April when we, when we come back and meet.
Thank you for doing that. It's very unfortunate that Mac can't be here today. Vic, you put your hand up, I think?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Just a couple of points. One is, I've, I've, I've read the document, obviously. Again, it would be nice to get longer sight, but that's neither in nor there. I am a little concerned with some of the things that's in it. The timing of the event, it doesn't give religious groups the chance for their, their part of it. It basically is you march in. The bugle goes, you lay your wreaths and you march off. And it's not what this town's been used to. So I'm not entirely happy with the makeup of it at the moment. And also there is very much a case of the Royal British Legion is sort of there in attendance, they can do their bit, but the rest of it's ours. And it's nothing to do with them. That's what seems to come across. That may not be. I might be a bit unfair with that. But if it's a member's parade, I would like the Royal British Legion very much to be involved. It's nothing to do with the club. Whether the club closes or not, Royal British Legion will still be running as the Royal British Legion. So whatever happens with the club, that's neither here nor there. And last point is, yes, I would like to be involved with that working group. Because previously, I did say that I would liaise with British Legion and I would still like to, to do that. So yes, I'll, I'll be on the working group.
My understanding was that Mac would have said he would talk to the British Legion. Do you know whether he has done?
I don't know that, no. I haven't since before Christmas, purely because I was going to and I've been laid up. But I'm now back on my feet and I will be doing that either this week or next week. I'll get hold of Rebecca and, and we'll go from, from there.
Well, Mac did say that he wants to set the meeting up before the next meeting. He's talking March, wasn't he?
Yeah.
And also, yeah. So, so you're, you're happy to be a member of his subcommittee or he's?
Absolutely.
Would anyone else like to volunteer, please? Thank you, Carla. Right. I'm grateful for your support, colleagues, on that. And I think that's the correct way forward with Mac not being here. Terry, do you want to add something?
To make a point. I think it's really important, the council is quite sensitive about this subject. Because the RBL have been delivering this, you know, for a long while and they've done a really good job. And I think what a bunch of stress is, I very much want it to be seen as us supporting and enabling it to happen, not taking it over. They have a lot of expertise. They've done this for a long while and we're adding to, not taking over from. And I think, I know we all know that. But I think it's really important that we say that and bear that in mind as we progress.
It's absolutely vital. And I think, I think both Mac and Vic are aware of that. And, and to some extent, they were chosen because of their relationship with the Royal British Legion. And we have to be absolutely clear, all of us, that we are not taking it over. And if Royal British Legion want us to, I mean, technically, they would be inviting us to either support them or, or take the lead. That's what it amounts to. Carla?
I was just going to say, I fully agree with Terry on this one. I think that's part of the reason why I joined Vic and Mac on this one. Because I'm going to, I get along really well with some of the members of British Legion and, obviously. I would like to work on a plan with Vic and Max's guidance that really brings both entities together with less possible friction, let's put it that way. They did deliver this for a very long time. So it's very historical. It's, it's, it's almost imperative that they are part of it in some, in some sense. But which format that's going to take, that's what hopefully we can work out.
Thank you. Hang on, excuse me a minute. I'm first then.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, reading this, it sounded so heavily weighted towards like the military side. It was too much, you know, parading and that sort of thing. My understanding of Remembrance Day services from being a child and growing up is it was a religious service and the church was involved. It's hardly mentioned in this. So I think if we're going to support doing it, we should look at both sides, not just, you know, the parade side and, you know, the salute or whatever. I just felt it was really an uncomfortable document. I didn't like it at all. I thought it was very one-sided and didn't reflect what Remembrance Day is about at all. I mean, that, that was just my, my feeling about it. I didn't, didn't think it was very balanced at all and wouldn't be something I'd want to support.
Right. I think, I think that we need to hear you on that. Chris and Carla?
Clarification, please. It says on this, it could be a final briefing of November the seventh, or, this is TDC. Would that be the mayor and deputy mayor as well?
So I think, I think what Mac means there is, I, I think he is alluding to us taking it over.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I think that's where the briefing is. But I think also, one of the, one of the, the things came out of the last committee meeting was the counter didn't feel as if they were adequately briefed by the civic officer as to what was, you know, demanded of them in terms of the process and the parade, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I think that's something as officers that we need to look at that and make sure we do that. And it could be embedded in this document.
So is that useful?
It's a yes. Go on, please. Absolutely, but it's, yes.
When it comes to the preparation of understanding what, what our roles want expected of us, we had this conversation at this meeting. And we, we, we more pretty much defined that we're going to put some sort of, you know, little step-by-step sort of bullet point, I don't want to suspect the people before going to the specific standing councils, we've never done it before. So I think we've already covered this before and I fully support it. I think it's easier for new people coming along to understand it. This is one, and this is a bit of a touchy subject because obviously the whole event includes, you know, the, the legion includes the, the civic side things and the religious, the religious group sides of things. But not everybody may or may not, so not everybody may be on board with supporting the religious group. So we've got some people in an awkward position. You let me finish. I, I fully agree that by tradition, I particularly like to involve those things because this is tradition, it's part of the whole, the whole sense of community involvement of, of what it is. But there's got to be a balance. And I think that's where the mayor and the deputy mayor, and whenever the next deputy mayor need to work together. And Chris had a good point. If you have two, two people that work very well together on those events, even if they don't agree on, on similar views of how those events should go ahead, one might not be up for it, but there'll always be the other one that can fill in and, and, and fill up that gap and continue to do those events despite their, their ideals of their beliefs. That's just a point in this.
Can I just come back on that? I understand that not everybody has any kind of religious belief. That's, that's not what I'm saying. I was saying this is too weighted away from what the Remembrance Day service has always been about. I was saying this is too weighted away from what the Remembrance Day service has always been about. And, and it doesn't matter to me whether you're religious or not. I think the church has always traditionally been involved. I mean, not everybody has a military background or is a comfortable, and I'm certainly not comfortable with this sort of parade. Um, so I think, I, I just don't think it's a balanced document. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay, um, we, we, we have discussed it and we have got a committee to take it forward. I'm suggesting we move on now to six nine seven, which is town events.
So at the last meeting, we did mention, um, roughly what our town events would be. I think this committee, in its terms of reference, has to approve and, adopt a list of town events for the, for the fourth of the year. And we, we didn't actually do that as a committee. We discussed it. Um, but now what we are doing as officers, Katie's here, she'll give you a bit more detail on some of these events if you so wish. This is the proposal for the town events that we are suggesting. It's similar to last year in terms of, because we thought last year's events programme was pretty successful in, in terms of seaside special and Witsen, et cetera. So we are proposing within the budget that these will be the list of town events. There's obviously other events that are proposed throughout the year. And we'll go on to another slide which shows a couple of those. The marketplace events are a schedule of several events throughout the period of April through to October, November time. But these are the key town events that we will, we will be delivering. It says in August twenty twenty four, Crofton Perry Weekend. I mean, Crofton Perry to some may mean a lot to others. It, what's that all about? So that's just a working title at the moment. We will come up with something slightly different. Um, but again, it's, we thought the seaside special was really successful last year, so we want to bring back that seaside vibe. Crofton Perry did a load of classic British sitcoms. So for the, for the oldies, the nostalgia trip back to the Heidi highs and the, and the dad's army and the alo alo and, and such like. Will bring quite a few visitors, we think, into that weekend. But also in terms of the youngsters who have no inclination or understanding of what Crofton Perry did. It's gonna be a holiday camp vibe with sea, with sand pits and puppet shows and all the rest of it. So it will still be that kind of event in August that we sort of delivered, or touched on last August, and this is just expanding it. Um, so really, we need you to approve that list or certainly ask any questions before we do so.
Vic.
Um, well, we're getting D-Day. What have we actually got? Because I think we should have a massive D-Day party.
So that's why we brought that in, because June the sixth, which is a Thursday, is the national day of D-Day celebrations in terms of beacon lighting and the commemorative services and things. So from Thursday all the way through to Sunday, we will continue that theme. And that's why that's classified as World War Weekend. So we'll have a, several different events throughout that weekend.
Still not actually got any meat on the bones yet.
Katie will fill you in a little bit on that one.
Yes, my idea is so for actual the, the D-Day days, the sixth, obviously, we're gonna get the schools involved and they're all making crossets for the, the men that lost their lives from Stepford. They're also doing an art installation project that will hopefully be then in the Guildhall that people can go and visit on that day. And obviously then we'll have the beacon lighting. We were speaking to Terry last week about how dull our beacon is sometimes when we light it and it's like a little bunsen burner. So we wanna make it a lot bigger. So we've been speaking to kind of some of the community groups as well and doing a, a big beacon parade. Obviously, we've got some lanterns, get the schools involved to then sing the same song. And potentially the beacon lighting outside King's House rather than on the marketplace. And then maybe parade up to the marketplace to have projections and recordings of D-Day survivors and D-Day stories. And make it kind of a light spectacle so that our kind of bunsen burner doesn't look so dull.
Burnery.
Bunsen burnery, yeah. And then to have that kind of party, like you're talking about celebration on the Friday evening with either a kind of forties dance or kind of a, that kind of big band dance in the Carnegie slash Guildhall. And then over the, you wanna go?
Well, we can't, we can't do it in the Carnegie because Friday the eighth is actually the mayor's civic reception. So the mayor's civic reception will have that theme. We've already spoken to Chris and we'll carry up theme on with his civic reception. But we could still have something in the marketplace for the general public.
Gardens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
King's Gardens.
Yeah.
And concert.
Yeah.
Well, that's possibly something on the Sunday, a Sunday afternoon. So again, we want to carry it all the way through so there's something different every day. Because again, some people may not even be able to come along on the Thursday and the Friday because of work commitments, but the weekend, they may well be able to, so.
And yeah, and then also, sorry, yeah.
Yep.
And then also over the weekend, we had great success last year and the year before with something called Stepford Dungeons and the Shadows of Stepford, which turned the Guildhall into an immersive experience for audiences. We sold out within hours. They were really, really popular. Um, so we're gonna turn the Guildhall into an immersive war experience where people would come in. So they'd kind of buy tickets, they'd come in and they'd sign up to go to, obviously, after D-Day and, and kind of have that background of live actors. Go into the large court where it would be kind of a World War hospital and be taken through to the council chamber where it would be the ops room where they, I've got the plans that they had for D-Day, so they'd watch that actually happen. Then they'd go upstairs where potentially the art installation that the schools have done would be, and it would be a moment of reflection with maybe some monologues. Then they come back downstairs to get their ration books and their food parcel from the tea room again. And then back into the large court for a nineteen forties dance. And then we could do that over several, several times over that weekend as well. So that's kind of the meat we've got so far.
Is there any plans for us, say, a concert in King's Gardens?
Not at the moment, no. Just that weekend or just in January?
Weekend to celebrate D-Day. Obviously, I didn't realize, I forgot, I didn't realize Saturday was gonna be for old Chris Harvey over there. There you go. But maybe some, Sunday afternoon would be the culmination of the, you know, the end of the celebration. If you get some loads, showcase some local talent.
Yeah.
Um, some singers sort of singing.
Forty songs.
Songs, et cetera.
We did a World War Weekend last year, which I'll touch on in my presentation, and we had, we kind of had singers, we had reenactors and, and that went down really well. And that was in the marketplace. And if we do something in the equivalent is, what? Oh, yeah, swing event.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Like a swing.
Nineteen forty. Don't get to it, don't get to it.
Yeah.
So we have the Carnegie on the, on, on the Saturday evening, so we are, we are thinking about having an nineteen forties swing band, et cetera. So again. I wish we'd, we'd be easier to deliver because Chris's Friday night will be themed in that, in that guise anyway, so. Sorry.
Do you want to come back?
Sounds so fine, I was just thinking of something.
Matt, did you one time have a hand up?
Yeah. Um, and it looks great, and I mean this with no disrespect to any previous events, but I would rather we did less and knock them out the park than did a lot and they're subpar. And we've been to a lot of events and some of them are really, really good, and some of them I'm like, oh my God, I'm embarrassed. And, and I, please don't take that in a, in a mean way, but if we're, we're gonna be going, we're gonna be gunning with this. We need to do it well. We need to look at increasing our promotion. The dungeons are fantastic, great idea for the five people at a time who are in there. What are we doing outside for the rest of the public and, and stuff like that? And our itinerary is being published so people know what time to come and things. And I love the market, the continental markets, fantastic ideas. I think they were brilliant. I had my, my body weight in food while I was there. But we can't just slap something on top of it because we know we've got a captive audience while they're there. And I just think that if we're gonna do it, I would rather chop something off and do the rest really well than just float through everything. And it's, and I'm glad the beacon was mentioned because mortified last time. It was like someone on the top with a lighter. Have we got a new beacon sorted?
Those beacons were, um, they were something that was nationally promoted through the, the campaign. Um, they were gaslit, so they were safe. The problem, the problem for us is they're, they're stuck on top of the flat roof, so they're higher away, so it looks even smaller. Um, the last time we had a proper brazier, it was at the top of Castle Hill. But then logistically, it was a nightmare because you have to have a fire tender on duty all the time. You have to have a plethora of people sort of supporting, you know, the guy that's, you have to, logistically, it was a nightmare. Um, so we need to find somewhere outside the marketplace that we could potentially have that kind of beacon. Um, and we did have a discussion the other day that we've got a, we've got a location outside this place, which could, could be just that location.
And do we have a beacon ready for that?
Well, we have a beacon that, well, we have the, 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 the sort of guts of a beacon that sits out here, that which is used on top of Castle Hill. But we need to have it modified and we, we, again, we will be talking to one of the, um, uh, factories that can possibly do that for us, because it was, it was pitiful, to be honest. Um, and we did have a lot of people turn out as we usually do for Stepford events, to be fair. Um, so we need to improve that. In terms of, um, scaling down to make sure we do it better, I, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Matt. And one of the things that we did look at these weekends is the continental market is there for four days. They don't come for any less than four days. And if we have, was really being super critical, uh, and we usually are with our debriefs as well. Uh, we, we performed really well for a couple of days, but then it petered out.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that we, we, you know, we continue to deliver over the four days ourselves. Because you're right, the continental market brings hundreds, if not thousands, of people into the town, so we have a captive audience. Um, in terms of what we're proposing or what Katie's proposed, I think it's manageable because if we're gonna theme the Carnegie in a nineteen forty style on a Friday, it carries over fairly easily into Saturday. And the experience we've delivered before, and I, I'm not sure where the five people came from because it was packed when I actually went on it, and it's a lot. But you, it's something that you, you cannot, you cannot skimp on it. It has to be something really immersive and really atmospheric. That's the thing that we need to concentrate on more than anything. Um, and that's where some of the budget that we've got for this will be invested in. But I think what we've planned for it is manageable as long as we address the beacon lighting, because that will be the thing that's nationally advertised. Um, but we're also talking to people from Keystone and schools and things like that, which will join a parade that culminates where the beacon lighting is. So, so again, we've not really had anything like that since the Hundred Torch Parade. So I think, yeah, I think it's something that we're confident that we can deliver, but.
Thank you. I've got Stuart.
Sorry, sorry, Mike, can I just say one more thing? Just one more thing, because, um, you know, if you do think we fail on anything and it's not up to your expectations, what I would ask is for you to tell us. Be really blunt and tell us. What I'd also appreciate is, if it happens, don't save it up for seven weeks to talk about it in this meeting because we haven't got time, because if we're really failing, we need to have a, a critical debrief. So if something has been embarrassing, then we need to know.
I think just, just, just to answer, I don't think anyone's failed. I think it's accepting mediocrity is sometimes the problem. But I don't think anyone's failed. The staff work very hard. You all do. You all work very hard.
Chris and Stuart and then Terry Land.
I'm very believer in this celebration is D-Day. I'm really not convinced to have people wonder about the ration books aligned with D-Day. D-Day was, we had Americans, we had Europeans, we had soldiers going onto the beaches. This is what we want to react, to show the children what these soldiers went through. Not the fact that the people here had ration books, everyone knows that, you know, but to see like four Americans on a high beach in gold, those cliffs they had to climb, they're machine gunned and all sorts of stuff. Possibly give people some kind of, possibly not, of an effect of possibly coming out of a landing craft. You know, you say the worst thing, they're not, they're coming out of a landing craft while under fire. We all went to see Private Ryan, what happened to the poor soldier. This is what we've got to get across, you know, because we've got to realise that what our soldiers did of this day, we can, we can sit here and discuss, you know, generation not celebrating. It's like, you know, and, and it was a war against fascism, you all know, and, you know, that's, that's. Now, but we really have to celebrate lots of people for their parents died and fought in D-Day. And to sort of demean it slightly and knock it down and, let's have an historic thing of that ration book, you know. Teach your children the immersive side, possibly, I don't know, to be able to be, to make them think they're climbing up cliffs or coming out of it. We've got a sandpit, you can put a landing craft, you know, that's something along that, and you do, I'd like to be involved.
Yeah.
Along with what is gonna be technical as well. But I would like to make sure that it's D-Day celebration, not a celebration of the World War. That the year after is.
The A.
That's the time to do the other bit.
Yeah.
This is just the D-Day, you know, because this is what made Europe free.
I'm gonna suggest, Katie, that we bring the subject up again in months' time, sorry, in two months, no, two months' time, so we're talking about, uh, April, aren't we? The last opportunity for the D-Day one before it takes place, so we need to have a crystal clear then. Right, I think we've now got Stuart and then Terry Land and then Vic.
What, what I would like to see, and that sounds like I can visualize it, is more or less educating or more as a history lesson for the young people of using the Guildhall now build like a, a bomb shelter. They, if the siren goes off, go into the bomb shelter, hail the glass, et cetera, and they come out the other side. And obviously there's ruins and fires, et cetera, to get them to sort of realise what the last generation went through and the significance that D-Day brought.
Yeah, that was one of our ideas. So obviously with all the big events that we normally do, we normally have a Schools Day on the Fridays. That would be inviting them to experience. And one of the things was we were gonna create that, that air raid shelter. And I know what you're saying about the, the D-Day, but there was other effects off the back of that, of, of D-Day that we can show as well. So I think, yeah, I think we can definitely come up with something that, that works for everybody.
But also the Schools Exhibition in the upper gallery is on the back of our work within the schools or our proposed work within the school. So people will be going in there teaching those, those things. And also in the council chamber, you did talk about, you know, that's an ops room. So it's actually delving into, you know, how they planned, um, you know, the actual band.
I'd also like to see after the D-Day then, almost like through the, through the next year, year and what happened up to V-Day. You know, little events that took place that we can sort of, you know, highlight and say, you know, the war still wasn't fully over until.
Yeah, yeah.
V-Day. And then because then by the time they get to V-Day, that, you know, these young people probably, oh, you know, this is why it's happened, not just to get us another.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, some more thinking and some more reporting. Terry Land, please.
Yeah, um, this is sort of my bag really, but how would the market traders, the existing market traders, not the continental ones, how would they expect it to be part of these events?
Well, we haven't spoken to, um, well, the, the continental market, I'm not sure. We'll have to speak to R and R um, as to whether, I mean, they were, you know, they were very, we did speak to them about Christmas and some of their traders actually engaged with, you know, dressing their gazebos and things up for the Christmas theme. Not all of them did. Um, so.
I'm talking about existing market.
Our existing market traders. We need to speak to them and see whether they want to get involved and how can they get involved.
We know.
They are very, you know, they are very receptive because they know that when we do events, especially on the market day, it does increase trade for them. Um, and they've.
I'm very keen that they don't get left behind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, whenever we've done events on the marketplace.
We've always spoken to them because sometimes.
It's a bad one.
We have to tweak their, their pitch locations.
I've, I've got to be honest, that's not what I've been told, Katie.
Okay, then.
I'm, I'm being, I'm being blunt here.
I'm happy for that, as long as that information gets fed back to us, because I went round to every single market trader when I've done any weekend event. Um, even had some of them in costume, so I, I would love to know.
This is the sort of thing.
Who said that they weren't involved because.
I mean, we have to.
Christmas lights switch on, I go to every single shop in town as well and get them involved.
In terms of the.
To know who said that they weren't involved.
In terms of the weekly market, we do have to have conversations with them when we do, uh, events that, that.
We need space.
Because we need the space, so sometimes we tweak them slightly so it's with their permission and involvement. Because as I say, they're, they're usually quite keen because they know it will bring additional footfall onto the market.
I've even had Apple in the stocks.
I think we, I think I'm right in saying that we agreed that the continental market would extend on to the marketplace.
Well, that's only if they're willing to do that, Terry, because we have, we did speak to, we did speak.
Okay, that's, that's new information for me.
Well, we did speak to the continental traders last time before Christmas. We said, because we were, we knew that actually come Saturday or Sunday, sorry, that we wouldn't have a lot more on the market, so it would be a bit of a dead space. And that's why we're saying our plans now are to make sure. And that's why we're saying our plans now are to make sure that we extend the programme from Thursday through to Sunday. But they were very reticent in, in leaving the High Street because we want, can't you pull some food vendors off?
There's supposed to be other events from there on the Sunday, aren't there?
No, but what, what you can't, what you can't do.
That, that works, that works doubly. It works for the traders and it works for the market.
But what you can't do is you can't say to a continental market trader, pitch up Tuesday and Thursday, clear off on Saturday.
I'm not suggesting that.
I think it was the whole Saturday thing. So if they, so Lee, who runs Rapid Events, he was happy to come onto the marketplace, but he would have to move his stools on Saturday, because obviously our market is pretty much full on a Saturday. So it's where he then puts those stools. So it's a case of us maybe having that conversation again and saying, look, because the trouble is, it could be that he just puts two stools on the marketplace because of how full our market is.
At the last market venues and comms, we agreed that that was going to happen. So are we now not agreeing that's going to happen?
No, what we're saying is that, so if we do get some other continental market traders and we can persuade them to be on the market Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, what we need to make sure is we're, we're not going to have a dead space Thursday, Friday and Sunday. Because on Saturday it won't be, because the rest of us.
So now I'm confused, are we doing it or not?
We are doing it, but, but it's only because we're, we're focusing more on making sure there's activity to sell. And I think that's why we may well be able to persuade them. We couldn't before because they said, well, what's going to be here Sunday? And there wasn't anything really. So we need to make sure that our programme is sufficient enough to make sure that they, they're not left out on a limb.
And potentially maybe speaking to some of the other traders, because I know people like Ale and, I can't remember who, and Joe, who first did first continental market. They came every day that the continental market was there, so it might be a case of speaking to them and saying, would you come again on the other day?
Screaming as a market for a hot food offering. Here we have one, it would be mad not to use it, wouldn't it?
Thank you. Vic, you, you, a long time ago, you wanted to speak.
Just going to reiterate what Chris said, that D-Day is like the D-Day stuff. Next year, we're going to have a massive party as well for VE Day. And so we don't want to go to, no, it's Victory, it's not, it's D-Day. And so we need to reflect what was happening at that time, eight years ago. So next, next year, we'll be doing it again, celebrating the end of the war, so. That was, that was just my, my point.
I think it is a celebration though this year as well of eighty years, so it's celebrating that eighty years. So I feel like you can have an element of celebration about D-Day. Like you're saying, like a big band kind of thing, to have that kind of element, but then potentially have your street parties and things like that next year for VE Day, so do it, the celebration in a different way.
Jerry, please.
Just to say, I'm very pleased to see the programme mapped, mapped out. I think it's a good spread over the year, which is helpful. And it's not just, you know, a couple of hours, it's, it's a package, which I think is, is nice. And, you know, I agree with the previous comments about doing less and doing it well. I think it's really important that we have a quality offering as a town council, so wish you well with that. I'm slightly nervous about the reliance on the continental market, because it's a bit like it's worked, we're going to keep rolling them out all the time. It doesn't cost us anything, but they also don't pay us anything, so I'm conscious of that. We put on events for two reasons. One, because the feel-good factor, and we want to give people something to do. But we also put them on to bring people into the town centre, to help, you know, local traders and business. So I, I hear what you're saying about engaging with town centre retailers, with market traders. Brilliant. I'd ask that we really, you know, focus on that. We put the events on to bring people into the town centre. We want them to spend money with people that are here all year round, not just money with the continental market, that's here three times a year. You know, that's largely why we do events, to help the local economy and all the rest of it. But we can't overlook that aspect in, in my view, so. Love it all, and I think if we as councillors can help with any of that, in terms of any of the events up there, then, you know, use the councillors as well as anything else.
Right, thank you. I think we've given it a good chew and I'm grateful for the progress we've made and obviously more progress to come. So I'm going to suggest that we move on to six nine eight colleagues, events sponsorship framework. We have, we're not, we're not coming new to this, Matt, but if you'd like to take us on, please do.
So, um, last meeting, you very kindly brought that information, which was greatly appreciated, about how we can increase sponsorship as the year goes. The ideas of the Christmas tree baubles and, and the, I think it was the A-frame outside that states who sponsored things for us around Christmas time. All excellent ideas, love them all. And that part I'm fine with. The bit that I'm wanting more scrutiny and more awareness on is what people who sponsor our events, it's being made aware to the public what they are sponsoring. And so if you sponsor, just an example, if you sponsor the signs for an event, I want it to be very, very clear that you paid for the signage, not the event. And we've had a couple of events I've been to and it looks like, and it's just the way it looks, it's no one's fault, but it looks like that company paid for the whole of the Christmas event. And we're, we're underselling ourselves and the hard work that you and the team put into these events. And we're absolutely over-delivering to, to someone who's only paid for one little thing. So I think the proposal that I sort of have is that any event in which a company or a business wants to sponsor, that it's scrutinised by the chair or the vice chair first before approval, just to make sure, because we have I'm, I just, I have concerns about, there's no trying to find the right words, the screw, also said, there's no scrutiny. We could be saying, yes, you give us that, we have no idea the relations between certain people, how, how that's been paid for, who's paid for it, and what they're getting out of it. So I just think what I would prefer is it to have chair and vice chair oversight at any, any event in which a company gives us money. Because if they're saying that if they give us money to pay for the high vises, I want the high vises to say, this high vis was paid for by X, Y, Z. Not the whole event. Thank you.
Do you want to digress? Are you happy to just rest it there or do you want?
Yeah, I open the floor.
And we've got.
I'll let Vic.
Karen.
I, I like the idea of companies sponsoring events. I'd love to see like the, the D-Day event, maybe a company pays for the band, because that takes the own risk off of us. So we can then invest that, reinvest the money that we saved on that into delivering more town events. So it's a great idea that they do. But like Matt said, it is, if they're paying for the band, then the band was sponsored by X, Y, Z. The posters were, were by X, Y, Z. That's fine, but what Matt's worried about, and I think he's right, is that event sponsored by, and all they've done is give us a hundred quid to put some posters in there. That's abusing the, the, the system that we've got for sponsorship. I love the idea of sponsorship because we can deliver more.
Jerry Land.
I think Matt's alluded to this, but I would stress that part of the problem with this is we're, we're selling ourselves so short. We could make a lot of money out of this, but we're, we're selling off an entire event, as Matt said, for a sake of whatever it is, a couple of high vis vests or, or something else. And we should be selling ourselves properly and making real money out of this, instead of just peanuts for for people who, who get an exceptional deal.
Thank you, Matt. No, it's a good one. As everybody, as everybody out there say. I, to be honest, when Matt brought this up, I, I was actually really pleased, because actually we don't have a system, we don't, we've not had one for a long, long time. I think we're going back to Morris Howard as town clerk when we, when we had something even anywhere near this. And maybe before that, we used to, we used to have like the hanging basket thing out there that actually identified the fifty people that chipped in to, to sort of help support them. I think this is, this is really good that we do this, because then as officers, we're absolutely clear. Where I, and, and, and I've had some experience in dealing with big sponsors in the past. And where, and I remember when we had the first meeting with UP, I actually sat down with their area manager and said, what is it that you want to get for your investment? Because I don't want to sit here in a year and you tell me that I've shortchanged you because we haven't done this. So event sponsorship formats are extremely important for both sides. And I think actually signing off, so, I mean, signing off the, the agreement should be councillor's prerogative. But I think we just did the work to try and bring the nitty gritty. Where I'm struggling, Matt, is I want to know what the structure is in terms of, if we were going to go for an event sponsor, for instance, we go for an event sponsor that's going to sponsor the whole of those events, full stop. If you're going to have a band on one of those events, you have a little banner in front of it. And we've sold the stage sponsorship, so anybody that jumps on that stage to play music and all the rest of it gets it. But it will still have the event sponsor, Setford Town Council's event sponsor for twenty twenty four, twenty five is blah, blah, with their logo. That makes it a lot simpler. That gives us the opportunity to go for a bigger sum of money, because they are sponsoring our whole event programme, which is then going to attract, we can tell them, you know, for some of these events, we attract two, three thousand people into the town centre. Times that by five, and, you know, that's something that's worth them investing money. So I think there's a, there's still a lot of work to do, but I'm conscious that we're losing time in terms of one of the big things that I think would attract a sponsor, and that's our floral displays. Because they're always recognised as something special. They're always fantastic, and I think that's something that we do need to, to sell quickly. So I would ask that we have some councillor input, but and maybe Katie and I, you know, try and put some meat on the bones, but we need to do this quickly. But I would be, I wouldn't be, I don't want necessarily to suggest that we have high vis sponsors. You're absolutely right, you know, we had someone that actually offered us some banners to highlight Christmas lights. But when you looked at it, it could be perceived that they were sponsoring the whole event, which Christmas light switch on is a huge event for the town. And they got a huge event sponsorship and profile for very little return. So I don't want to do that. I want, I want it really, you know, signed off. And I think we go for three, four, maybe big sponsors. And then the sponsors know where they, where they sit. We know we can deliver it on, on their behalf and their benefit, and we'll get the financial benefit to invest in all the stuff that everybody keeps dreaming of. Big fires that the kids are going to climb out of because they're just, you know, blowing up a tank or something. So that all costs money unfortunately, and we need money.
So I'll just ask if Terry Land's, you happy with that now or?
Yeah, I think so. I, I just think we need to sell ourselves better.
Terry, Jane.
At the last amenities meeting, we spoke about hanging baskets and the various hubs around town. Because historically, we used to get quite a lot of money from hanging basket sponsorship. And then it became quite difficult and then we kind of just stopped even asking. And we agreed in the last meeting there'd be fifty pounds per basket and a hundred and fifty pounds per barrel. They're the free tier planters outside the post office and the Green Dragon Roundabout and various other places in town. And there'd be a sort of package of what you get, there'd be a, normally a poster with a list of all the hanging basket sponsors. And in the tubs and barrels, there'd be a little packet. Easy to do with two hundred and forty hanging baskets, because all the same, it's roughly fifty quid. I think what will be really useful for all of the events is the, there's a lot more variety with the costs, you know, one band, that's a lot different to another band and, and that sort of thing. And I think probably someone needs to map out all of the different sponsorship opportunities that we've got and some indicative prices. And you've almost got a menu there to go to different companies. I mean, somebody might like to sponsor our conservation work on Barnham Common, for example. Just having spent ten grand to cut in the forest trees and bushes, that would be someone else paid for that. But yeah, actually, you come up with quite a nice menu and it should be relevant to, it could be fifty quid or it could be five thousand pounds. You know, so, but I think officers need to look at the different options across the different committees and then take it from there.
Sorry, Mike, one further one. If we're going to do this, and I think we should, we need to market it properly. So that means proper publicity, doesn't it? We need to, we need to let people know that this is what is on offer.
Made. Right, we, we, we are taking that forward, we, we hope, and I think it's general agreement around the table, so pausing in case anyone wants to come on, but no one does, so six nine nine financial report for the ten months ended January. But hopefully we can go through this at some pace.
Yeah, this, this is, I mean, to be honest, just looking at the finance report, we, we've delivered within budget on, on all major areas. So there's nothing really to, to, to red flag. And as I said, most of these mayoral events, civic events, town events, they've all, they've all been delivered now, they've all been completed. So the next few months for us is, is not in terms of delivery, it's to make sure planning for next year. But it doesn't sit within this, so there's nothing really to, to highlight. As I said, everything has come within budget, so no red flags there. The only thing I would say is the Christmas lights. The contractors tender was for three years, it's complete, completed last Christmas light, so we will be going out to tender very soon for a new contractor or the same contractor, depends who ever wins it, going forward.
Any comments, please? Just a comment on, on that. I am shocked at the cost of the lights. I was shocked when I saw it the first time and it shocked me again, so yeah. Is, when it comes to going out to tender, do we go in with a figure and we see who matches that? Or do they come and present to us?
So this is, I'll be absolutely honest with you. This has been put into this committee's budget this year. It's always sat within amenities, so I have nothing to do with the previous tender. But, but can I just say it's slightly, slightly more than just putting them up and taking them down? You know, there's, there's visits to actually test them before, test the bracket in, do, do all the, the weight testing on them. The support in terms of being here on the night and for a period after, if there's any issues. It does seem to be a lot of money. I'm glad that we've come three hundred and sixty four pounds within budget, so we are still within budget. But, but again, hopefully when we go out to, so it's, it's delivering the spec, it's, you know, so again, you guys will see the tender spec and agree the tender spec before we go out to tender, as you do with all tenders, so. Thank you.
Any more comments on that report, colleagues? Thank you very much. Well, that was six nine nine. We have visited seven hundred already. So moving on to seven oh one Guildhall Heritage Hub project.
So it says lead committee officer, but I'm really, really pleased that I'm passing this one over to Katie.
Oh, yeah, so I thought, so obviously, if you don't know, I was employed two and a half years ago to oversee the events side of the Guildhall Heritage Hub and the heritage and education side of it. So when I joined, all the capital works were done, so I'll give you a brief overview of what the project was. Because obviously, we have a lot of new councillors here who don't know what the project was. And so the Guildhall Heritage Project was to develop a successful community heritage hub with an additional tea room, a creation of professional heritage display about famous people relating to the history of the Guildhall. Deliver an education programme and a community engagement activities programme. Inspiration stories about the famous folk from the Fletford Guildhall to re-envision the volunteer programme and complete, and increased capacity with training educators, researchers, tour guides, exhibitionists, but all on a volunteer basis. Professionally conserve the displays in our civic history and our Sikh history and look at the asizes courts that used to sit in the Guildhall for hundreds of years. And then also the restoration, remodelling and improved access. So all the capital works was done before and during Covid, so that's when we first originally got the bid. So obviously that was the steps outside, the entrance, the toilets, putting the kitchen in, developing the tea room. Obviously before we got this bid, the Guildhall wasn't really used on a regular basis, it was used for council meetings. And sometimes there was kind of bric-a-brac sales in there, but it wasn't used. Like it used to be used in the olden days where it was kind of a hub of community and that was the point of. Like, it used to be used in the olden days where it was kind of a hub of community, and that was the point of this project, to make it the hub of the community again. So then we had also in that spec, it was a very, I mean, I've delivered heritage and arts projects for nearly twenty years now, so, and this one was the most specific one I'd ever seen when I took on the project, it was very specific on what we had to deliver with regards to events and education. But this is kind of just a roadmap of kind of where we got to. I will say as well, there is a full extensive report, this is just some bits taken out. So if anyone would like a copy of it, then please let me know and I can forward it to you. But basically, we had to deliver four big town events, which were Punjab Festival, it was a World War Weekend. It was a Victorian steampunk weekend, and it was a community kind of creative weekend as well that we had to deliver within that project, which we delivered all of those in the last two years. We also had to deliver an education project, which saw us just working with four EMAT schools in Thetford, that then rocketed after that, and we're now working with extensive amount of schools. Is that the first slide or the second? Second, so I can get back to the first one. Thank you, sorry. Yes, the first timeline, obviously, I was appointed as heritage officer as part of the process, it was part of the budget to employ a heritage and town events officer. Then we delivered the Punjab Weekend in September twenty twenty-one, which was attended by thousands of people on the marketplace. And the newly refurbished steps were full of people, which was lovely. We then, as part of that heritage kind of package as well, we had to deliver the story of Homes and Cable, who are some of our founders of kind of Australia. It's a beautiful story, if you don't know it, please come and talk to me about it because it's an epic story and huge for our history of Thetford. That play was commissioned and took place on the marketplace, which is part of the project. We opened the tea room in October twenty twenty-one, we appointed our education officer. Just after that, we delivered Christmas light switch on with part of, part of that was to do with the heritage as well. And just have events on the marketplace and within the Guildhall. So that's when we kind of really started to move things around with the, with the Christmas light switch on to involve the Guildhall and the marketplace a little bit more. Terms of the asizes, so we've done extensive research on the Guildhall and we've found some incredible things that have happened in their trials, we started to recreate those trials as part of this project as well. So people could come in and listen to trials that were set in those exact walls over two hundred years ago. We did six of those and all of them sold out. We did Shadows of Thetford, which I, I kind of touched on earlier. We had the size this weekend because Thetford, two hundred years ago, would have been full of people excitedly coming into the town centre to watch some poor unfortunate souls be trialled in the Guildhall. So we, as part of the project as well, had to recreate one of those, which we did. We did the Jubilee, Creative Carnival, Thetford Dungeons, next slide, did lots of things along this road, now the Christmas lights. So we then started Guildhall tours, which are still successful. I did one last Saturday, Saturday before, and it was sold out. So we toured people around the Guildhall and tell them all about the the famous folk that were there. We had the mosaic restored and repainted within the Guildhall corridor, and we also did a project with the schools, it's still ongoing at the moment. Which is all paid for by the Heritage Lottery, but still coming to the final stages, which the schools have designed mosaics to go in near the toilets of the of the Guildhall. We did a steampunk event, which was also called Stinky Streets, there's our lovely mare Alan Minns, that was based on him, Victorian mare, who cleaned all of our rivers and cleaned all of our streets. We then had the Singh family tree painted, and we've just got a beautiful tablecloth to go over our large table all about our history with the Sings and our history with kind of our civic history with Freddie Julip Singh. So that was another thing, World War Weekend, we then had another history weekend where we had lots of people come and develop their skills, heritage skills. We had a school celebration because it was coming up to two years of doing lots of outreach with the schools, seaside special, Halloween events, the water trough on the marketplace was finished off to have more, to have clean water back on, on, on its site. Doesn't make any sense. Yes. So yeah, just, so the project's been hugely successful. Obviously, I've just got a few things I just want to highlight, we'll skip through these slides because I know I could act, I could talk for absolutely hours about this project, but I won't. But we, we're incredibly up on the figures that we should have had, we should have had thirty-six thousand visitors on average, but we, we didn't, as you can see from this, our growth was huge over, over that period. And also, we, we trained forty-two new volunteers. We had over fifty-two senior citizens taking part in community craft projects. We've, we've worked with over one thousand five hundred schools in our outreach projects and then over in our schools projects. And that's now increased to over three thousand. We have an additional hundred young people that's taken part in our Heritage Heroes scheme, and they are ambassadors to their school. And they have lessons with Amber once a week on a Wednesday, and they go back and teach it to the rest of their classes. And we have a core volunteer research team of six people who should, who go and research in Norfolk Archive Office, like register offices for us and deliver talks and tours with our school voluntarily. Skipping on, our education, like I said, has gone out the way, like, yeah, it's, it's excelled more than we could. We've got schools from Suffolk, we're now working with every single school, even the upper schools in in Thetford, and we work with schools, we work with UEA in Norwich, and we also work with both West Suffolk College and the Abbey Gates School College. So what worked well, obviously, exceeded visitor numbers. The tea room was success, successful in the picture that the original bid painted of it until obviously Horace Staffolding got put in. The programme of events was really well received, we had a wide range of audiences. I've got the audience kind of surveys and feedback, if you ever want to see any of that. We had, we have great attendance for our historical tours, we installed all the installations of displays within the tea rooms and the corridors. We had obviously four original schools packs, we've now got six, and we also do extra outreach work. And we obviously have a group of four strong volunteers. And also with our schools project and our, our kind of outreach work, it's definitely shown people that didn't know about the council, what the council does as well, especially some of our school trips. But kind of when our, when our, some of our students become councillors, we educate the students as much as we educate the teachers. There's not one teacher that's come on our tours and our schools programme knew that you were voluntary, everyone thought that you were paid. So it's this, that kind of, it's that education of everybody, not just, not just students. So the legacy of the Guildhall project is obviously we have a really extensive education and outreach project. And that the Guildhall has become more than just a heritage hub, it's become a community hub. We have a community choir, we have a community writers' group, we have a community strings quartet group, we have obviously, group of volunteers that do all of our tours and things like that, but we also have grown lots of lots of other community projects outside of that as well. So we had a drag night that started off in the Guildhall, he's now progressed to doing it in the Carnegie. So we've had lots of theatre in there, we've had weddings, we've had so much stuff go on in that building. And the capacity is much bigger than we originally thought with some of the stories and the history that we've found. And yeah, so that's it in a nutshell, but not really because I can speak for ages.
I'm proud, this is, I think, the biggest, not, I can remember the sort of, thank you very much. Can I just ask you, I've got a note here that says we, we aren't going to talk about the Rixmore Project or the outdoor PA equipment, I presume there's is there no update on those, or do you want to have a quick update on those at some stage?
We, I mean, I can take it in the, in the next bit.
Okay.
There's no questions for Katie, I can do that.
Any, any follow up on, on what Katie said?
Yeah, of course, yes.
Terry?
A bit really boring. Obviously, the, the outcomes and the delivery has been fantastic compared to where things were in the past. As Chair of Financiality, sorry to ask about finances. Is there a separate report on budget and how we feel against that? Just about to ask more questions.
In the, so in the main one, it has the financial report in here that me and Alan did. Because obviously I have to, so everything has to go to Heritage Lottery, so Heritage Lottery had to do a monthly report, a monthly kind of overall report and a monthly financial report, so I've got all of those that you can see. But it kind of, you can see, you've got kind of the tea room saves as well as venue hire, as well as events income over, over the kind of two and a half year period, so.
But the headline figure is we were on budget.
Yes.
And everyone's happy.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much indeed for that, and out of seven oh two colleagues is community engagement, so do you think there's any further media release required or any further consultation or anything that should definitely appear on social media or indeed not? Yes, please.
Yeah, it's not as a result of today's specific meeting, but you know, when we spoke about the events, when we were having the discussion when we first got elected, not being on social media, I keep using the Colford Classic Car Show as my example, driving around town. I always know that there's going to be the Colford Classic Car Show. I don't do social media, right? The events that we've had listed up there, I just think we need to, and not specifically right now, obviously, as a result, we're starting to think we need to get across a bit. To maybe, you know, I just use the post office, like custom service. You know, their posters up with a list of them in advance and then nearer the time specific to the events. Maybe the football clubs, I'm just, the places that people go, I just think we could do a really good and not necessarily expensive job of getting the events known around, not just on the digital format. But I don't know if that's shared with you, it's just mine.
It makes sense about putting the lists of the, of the posters, the strategic places where people usually tend to go and giving me like the numbers to make, make the most impact possible.
I live in Random Road, every time I pull up at the traffic lights by the chase, I see.
I, I, I know, that's just obvious. It works.
So firstly, Vic beat me to it on that one. In terms of the only one that has permission to legitimately do that is members of the Showman's Guild, which is the fum player and the surface. So technically, we can't do that, so if we did that, we would be absolutely crucified with stopping other people. One thing that we have spoken about, but unfortunately it costs money, is we need more community poster sites. Although we can use community centres and things like that, and again, if you go to the North Norfolk coast and you go into the the toilets there, they will have those very posters, they will tell you what's coming on right the way through the summer season. So again, you know, I mean, we've got three public toilets that we should have posters tied within them, you know, because people go in there, so, so that's. But we, you know, we talk about the marketplace and we haven't a proper poster site on the marketplace. So that's somewhere where we definitely need it. And really, we need another one down by King Square. One of the things that I've put down here for community engagement, and it's not going to be tomorrow because we need to flesh out things like sponsorship opportunities, but we don't meet again for another two months. So certainly by then, we need to have highlighted the fact that we are offering sponsorship opportunities to those businesses that want to engage with a town council that's very proactive in putting on community and town events. So once we've got that format, we can do that. We have agreed tonight the two thousand and twenty-four events sponsorship programme, so we need to get that out. But with a specific focus again on D-Day, because that's a big national event and we're going to do so much more. So as long as we give ourselves a few, a few days just to get all the additional things that we've spoken about tonight with some of the councillors actually embedded into that as well. We need to, we need to tell people that Thetford's going to celebrate D-Day fantastically well. So they're the, they're the things that, that, that I've got that we can do.
Just as a point of clarification, so I just use the post office as an example because I've spent probably fifteen years of my working life in that building. If you have permission from them, you can't put anything up in the caller's office or, you know, any is that required, you know, you get the permission from the manager of that building or whatever it might be. Are you then allowed to do it? I understand not on the traffic lights, I get all that. I'm talking about, you know, where you go to pick up your parcels, and a lot of people will use that main central point to pick up your parcels. Seems like an ideal place, we've always advertised businesses free of charge in there. And obviously, I'm sure there's a lot of other examples around the town. For example, and I use the football clubs as for example, when we was involved in Thetford Town Football Club, we asked Tesco's if we could use some of their land and we put a I know this has not been used anymore, to be fair, but they put a next fixture poster up there. And we, all we got was permission from Tesco's. So are we not in that position or?
So we had a call from the marketing arm that Tesco's use that are trying to flog us something like a three thousand pound sponsorship for putting posters up in their beak. But, but again, both supermarkets have community boards, the garden centre has community boards. And we are not a commercial organisation and we're doing these events free of charge in most cases for the good of the residents, so we need to get back to Tesco Sainsbury's and the garden centre and see, because they, they have a huge footfall.
I did mean for that Robyn sponsorship, by the way, I wasn't actually contradicting the point you made earlier, I just meant for a community perspective. No, everyone's on Facebook.
But also, someone told Katie and I the other day that, you know, they, they put posters up in shops and things. And every time we've gone into shops, the classic answer is that they have to go to head office to get permission. But again, we need to get back around because if, if there's been a shift in in mindset over that, then again, that's a great opportunity to to advertise.
I think the Sainsbury's should do, Sainsbury's head office, Tesco's is Sainsbury's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, and, and talking to Matt, he's very keen to get involved in, I mean, he'd be one of the options to to talk to in terms of sponsorship because he's bringing that conversation to the table, he wants to get involved, so he's got a community window there, so.
Terry? Hello, I'm sorry, we've got, we've.
I was just going to say for Adam's benefit, because he's not on venues and communications, but those of us that are, Hazel's pretty good now at bringing a little pack of posters to every meeting of things that are coming up for councils to take away. So I take it away, you know, you know, give it to the guys at Charles Marrow, they stick it up there. I wonder if maybe we should roll that out to full council, because obviously we're not picking up all eighteen councillors, just the eight that are on that committee. But what we don't want is start spending days and days and days trawling around buildings, sticking up posters when there's eighteen of us, if we all take a pack of posters, we're all involved in various buildings and groups and stuff. And that's what I do. We maybe expand on that further, that all, you know.
We also work really, and I say this because we've got a, they've got a meeting this Thursday, the U three A, which have a big membership. And for the sake of Hazel spending five minutes on producing their next month's speaker's poster. They also take a pack around all the surrounding villages, all the post offices, the, the little community shops that they deliver their their poster of the U three A two, so they take our posters with them. So again, we're building those connections all the time, so hopefully we're getting out there, but you're never gonna, you're never gonna get a hundred percent coverage, but we need to strive for that. So any other ideas that people have got, that's absolutely brilliant. Let's hear them.
Vic? Vic, I think you were next.
No, no, okay.
I was just thinking out loud, if you are having conversations with companies about sponsorship, perhaps if they decline any financial sponsorship, then an option to put a poster up might be the last part of that conversation.
Yeah.
That's too quick, I forgot last one, really sorry, have we put in for the five hundred pounds record?
Three hundred pound, yeah, well, we were only able to put in for the match funded and the beacon, but as we're looking at a more appropriate beacon, then three hundred quid's worth.
Can we move on then to committee officers' update? Is there anything from you?
The only thing, so and this is doing with complete agreement of the acting town clerk, because unfortunately Carla asked for an agenda item for this meeting. And she did email the acting town clerk about it, and he totally forgot to push it through to you and I. So so this is, this is, with your mission chair, this is maybe an opportunity where Carla can just talk about it. She's talking about what we could do in support of Portuguese ambassador's visit, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the three points, there's no major decision required, so it's a good thing because once it isn't put in the agenda, it would be awkward to try to make a decision without an agenda item in it. So yeah, Alan did email me and it said, she apologised, it was just an oversight, and I could always get a chance to put a word in now. So yeah, Alan didn't email me and it's safe. I apologize. It was just an oversight and I could always get a chance to put it working now. So there's three things that we have developed in the background, but we just need the council's support in principle for those things. One of them is that I already spoke to the mayor with Stuart. We're going to arrange a date that works with him and they work with Puski's ambassador because on the previous meeting they, they had, they agreed he was going to come up and make a visit and go for, you know, a little tour of Fethford to get to know a little bit of the local area, a little bit of the, the industry. So we tried to organise enough a day or so that we have, we have a lunch, where we have a meal with ambassadors. We can all socialise and network and then perhaps take it to a few crucial locations like the museums, the steam museum and just have a little tour of Fethford for them to understand what Fethford's all about. And, and other points to understand the diversity within the town. So I'm just depending on Stuart's state, his availability, so I can match that with ambassadors. So just, there's just an update on that respect. This is open to all councils and everybody that wants to join us on that they will. But obviously I'll speculate email about it after. The next one is, we spoke about creating a festival, Puski's theme for the cultural, music, food, et cetera, side of things. I like the similar to Punjab, maybe not as big to start with because the Punjab has been running for a bit. But something similar, just for the festival, people can get together and have a good, have a good time. We had a difficulty because obviously we already kind of close to spring. Try to organise it for this year might be a bit of a challenge. So we even spoke about maybe try to put this down to the end of the summer. This is something I'm going to bring back to another meeting because I need to figure out with, with the institutions, including the, the groups that are going to perform, because this will be arranged externally. I'm just looking to let you, to get you guys informed and to get the support of the council. It may be that as a group will put in a little request for a, a small grant to support some of the cost of setting up the, the, the event. But the support will withstand as much as this. I'm going to contact Breckland Council for the riverside licensing and all that stuff. So that's more also organised by an external group together with the, with the Puski's entities. But it is for Fethford, it will be setting Fethford. So it's just relevant general support for it. The one, there's another point that we spoke about before, that to be about the old twin, you know, called the Lincoln. The sister towns was trying to introduce a partnership with the Puski's town. This is also, this was also discussed on the previous meeting between some of the people and here from the embassy. The embassy is completely on board. They already get the sample approval. We're just waiting to, to, to make sure that, you know, the council is okay with it and wants to proceed with it. So get your support on that because I need to be able to get the support before going to the Portuguese authority to another town or city across and make a proposal on their side. They will be receptive because they have the best of the support. But I need to make sure that the sides are on board as well. There's no point me starting rolling the ball and trying to organise those, those conversations. How are we going to proceed? What kind of, what kind of structure, what kind of plan are we going to have for this type of partnership between towns? What's going to be in and what's going to be out if obviously one of the sides is not on board. So I need, I need that, that's the only bit that I kind of need the decision on per se. But if it can be pushed on for just full council or another meeting, I'm happy to do so because obviously this was sort of the last minute. So if we can, if I can get support and that and put that in the next agenda item, if we're able to go forward, that would be great. Lastly, it's, I mentioned before, I was planning on planning to some of the councils who are present about the organising of the trade show. This is, this is the third edition of the Puski's offer with a major trade show with businesses, business to business, a business to consumer event. The latest one took place in London. We're trying to be able to bring it to Istanbul. Initially we aimed this for 25. It's now being established that it will be in 26. The reason being because it's going to be substantially bigger. I, I, I distribute, I'm not going to bore you with details because I distributed a little update. So so you guys have a, a sort of an idea what negotiations are and each point of the conversations we are at with developing this event. But there are a lot of organisations on board with it, including chambers of commerce that will come and Puski's from their side will come to the embassy to sign protocols with, with myself, with the people that's organising this, the post office that's organising this, saying you have some long, you have some protocols to make sure that should the show goes ahead between the entities from here and abroad. And same's been done on this side, but the details are that you guys can read a little bit out. If there's any questions, just ask me about it later. I'm happy, I'm happy to explain. So what I need is make Fethford the headquarters to base for it. This, this, this is what I'm personally pushing for. I mean, this is an event that's going to go ahead. We are negotiating with the grounds, could be Norwich, could be Cambridge. We are trying to negotiate the terms, very small know where it's going to be based. We still have time, we have two years on the making because it's a large event. That will take a long time. However, the base and the headquarters, I really want to make it in Fethford. Because if I'm able to produce, the organisation produce all the paperwork and say, the rest of the office has, has Fethford Norfolk and put Fethford on the map somehow, which is something I can't do because the event itself is not company hosted in Fethford. We just don't have the capacity for an event of this size. We can't have the event, but we can have the headquarters here. So I'm going to put a proposal to the council to support the group, to support the plan and to, you know, give me the, give me the, the tools and resources necessary to base an office in Fethford. That doesn't mean that the council has to give me an office, just in case you're wondering. I am going to talk to Breckland Council, they do have offices on, on the centre. And perhaps this is something that can, we can negotiate, having a space there to base this air. What I need is to have the full support of the council to get the logo and the sample approval, test of them council for this before I go back to the embassy and the entities and tell them, this is really going to happen. It's a year. So where is Fethford and are they on board? And how would we know that? I'm going to need some, some confirmation in writing to make sure that the Fethford council name to it and the stamp, the stamp input as well. That's, that's summary basically.
Thank you. Anyone to add to that? And I think we, we, we can make a recommendation to council to discuss it or to decide on it. Perhaps that's, that's probably the first we would expect to go in this meeting. I'm happy to do that colleagues. So we discussed at a full council meeting. We can't leave it to our next meeting, which lives two more months.
It is a long time.
So we'll, we'll put it on the agenda of full council if we can do.
This is why I put it well in advance, but unfortunately the focus included. So I'm sorry. And I know it was meant to be discussed in advance, but it is what it is.
Okay, thank you. I've got Terry.
If it, if it's going on a future agenda, whether it be for council or a committee, can there be some clarity about what we're being asked for? Are we being asked for support in principle? Are we being asked for money? Are we being asked for staff time? What shall we be voting on? I'm very happy with the principle. I think it sounds lovely. But what does it mean in pound, shilling and pence and commitment? When we have that, we can table a vote.
I, I accept that because I think actually there have been a number of items this evening where it's not been absolutely clear whether we're just listening, whether we're taking it forward, whether we're making a specific decision. I think we do try and, we do have to. Really simply speaking, if a decision's going to be made, it should say in the agenda that we are going to make a decision. So we need to be a bit clearer in the way we word some of the agenda items.
I can clarify. And financially.
But as I suggest colleagues, that given the time, we, we simply, we, we could turn it there. But we say we, we will put it forward to full council if, if you're up to do that. Okay. So I'm going to push on because we do have a, a below the line item, 704 exclusion of press and public. And I'm going to do the official read because you have to do it. So there. To consider resolving that pursuant to the public body's admission to meetings at 1960, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of the business on the grounds that publicity would be perjudicial to the public interest by a reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. And we have to decide.